Twenty fifth of October, the project's expected to be completed by midsummer next year. And with that, the cost estimate currently is two hundred and forty nine thousand. It's a fairly unique structure. Essentially, what it does is with that drop acts as a waterfall. There's a lot of energy, especially with high rainfalls. And so the structure works in low rainfalls as well as high rainfalls. Uses the water itself against each other to dissipate that energy. There's also some concrete soldiers in the path of the flow that help that energy to dissipate so that it doesn't erode further downstream. And so with that, this project is expected, the structure is expected to last the minimum fifty years, hopefully many decades beyond that, and solve that problem that we have.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions or comments from the council?
Mike, you said that this looks to completion mid twenty twenty three, like July. What impact does this have on Carroll Gate Boulevard, given spring baseball, all that fun stuff during summer?
So parking would probably be impacted. We have adequate parking, but people do like to park along both sides of Carroll K there. So we, during construction, they only plan to take out one lane, so eight to ten feet, and be able to maintain two lanes of traffic. So we'll have to restrict parking on either side of the construction for a couple hundred feet, something like that. So it'll be a little bit more of an imposition on parking, a little bit longer walk. So we hope actually that this project is, is completed over the winter months prior to spring if a contractor is available. It is a dry period, and it is work that can be accomplished in the shoulder seasons of winter when you can pour and cure concrete. So that's our, our goal with that, and we'll have to wait and see. And who's the contractor awarded?
How old is the existing building?
Um, it's not that old. I'm thinking it's late nineties, early two thousands as, as the structure itself, so.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
I'm moved to approve the specification.
Great. The motion of Camphorath, second by Colterman. Need for discussion? Sign no, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Camphorath, Colterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
Item number five, request for approval of the updated rules and regulations for the Civil Service Commission. Please, Chief Peters. Welcome.
See you again. Welcome in everyone. Uh, as a way for us to attract, actively recruit and attract good candidates for open police officer positions, we're requesting a modification of our civil service rules. Uh, there's been some recent bill signed off by the governor in July that made it easier for candidates from another state that are certified, or for them as reciprocal candidates, to get their Nebraska certification, streamline the process. They've also increased tuition, remission for, for officers attending state universities, colleges, and community colleges. So the, you know, the state level, they're aware of the position that we're in right now. And it's just, it's not us. It's everybody is, is, is going through this. So what we are doing is looking, thinking outside the box, trying to come up with some new ideas, seeing what other departments are doing so we can keep pace with them. So our suggestion now, or let me backtrack. In the past, regardless of whether you were certified or not, everybody went through the exact same civil service process. Once you're cleared to take the test, you met minimum requirements, took the test, and then if you passed, you went on to the Civil Service Board for an interview. What we're proposing is that if you are currently certified, whether you're in Nebraska or you're a reciprocal candidate, or you're currently certified in another state, that we waive the test, the written test. They will still have to interview with the civil service, and that would be their, their testing process. One hundred percent of their score would be based on that interview alone. Whereas the other basic candidates, it's a combination of the written test and the civil service interview score to add it to one hundred percent. So again, this is something that other agencies are doing. The Civil Service Board agreed with this. So we just would like your support in moving forward. If this is passed, we will tomorrow open up our current opening. We advised the, the council that we have another officer whose last day with us will be October first. So we will be looking to hire two candidates. Obviously, getting somebody that's certified will be beneficial. Speed up the training process, get them on the street quicker. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Chief Peters, yes.
Chief Peters, the certification in the other cities or states, I'm assuming it's, it's all pretty comparable, right? Like, would, would you feel comfortable with someone who's already certified meeting what our qualifications?
Thank you for bringing that up. With the new state law, reciprocal candidates are required to pass a standardized test that the training center will administer. They're supposed to do it once a month, offer that. So it's just a combination of them passing the test and passing the, the physical agility requirement, and they'll, they'll get their Nebraska certification. It's all real new right now, we're trying to feel, feel it all out. But, and the state is also required to provide them with a study guide to prepare. But everybody seems to be on board with, with it and confident. Now, if we have somebody that for some reason is unable to pass that test, they have two opportunities. If they don't make it the second time, they would have to go through the full basic.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Chief Peters? I was about to entertain a motion.
I'll make my own.
I'll second.
Motion by Colterman, second by Camphorath. Is he for discussion? Sign no, please register your votes. Please.
Voting in favor, Camphorath, Colterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
Thank you, Chief. Item number six, fiscal year twenty twenty three agreements with the Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership. We have President C L Jonathan Jenk with us this evening. Item six A is the membership agreement, and item six B would be the funding agreement. Welcome, Jonathan.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, council. Thanks for the opportunity to present both the funding agreement and membership agreement to you this evening. I want to start off by saying that I do have with me tonight Dwayne Minor, who is one of our board members for our organization. Grateful for him being here this evening, and he'll share a couple of his thoughts in, in a bit. I want to say thank you to the Seward City Council for your investments of, of time and funding into our organization over this last fiscal year. Thanks especially to a council member, Ellen Beck, for her continued time and dedication to our board of directors. I'm grateful for her engagement over the years that she's served. I'd like to briefly review our public sector funding agreement with the Seward City Council to display our compliance over this last fiscal year. So I'll pass this out. So the funding agreement was signed from October first, twenty twenty one, to September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. And the city's annual investment was sixty nine thousand, five hundred and twenty five dollars in our organization for that current fiscal year. And it is spent towards the operations of our organization and according to Nebraska statute. The public funds were and are segregated in a separate bank account, and the funds have only been used for the purposes of economic development. There's been an annual audit conducted within sixty days of June thirtieth, twenty twenty two to ensure compliance with this agreement. Proof of the audit was emailed to you earlier this month. And then also, we had an additional independent audit conducted at the beginning of twenty twenty two that was emailed to you all on February twenty fourth, along with our quarterly report that we send out regularly. We'd like you to please consider renewing your supportive economic development efforts in Seward County through entering into a new funding agreement and public membership agreement with our organization for your upcoming fiscal year. I'd like to briefly highlight some of the economic development projects we've been working on over the last approximately twelve months, and that's the second document that you have as a part of your packet. And I think it's clear to see that through, through our efforts and the many partners through the business community, that Seward County continues to grow. I'd like to point your attention to one quote in particular from Sam Nixon, who's the owner of Jimmy John's Restaurant in Seward, which recently located their business in historic downtown Seward. Sam says, "The SCCDP was a guiding hand in helping me build my business. From providing resources and making introductions, I was able to put the pieces together efficiently." Wanted to share this because I think the quote does a nice job of articulating the various ways our organization can and does help entrepreneurs and businesses to grow in Seward County. We're fortunate to have four other hardworking staff members, Leanne Miller, Harrison Helmer, Jacob Jennings, Donna Hendrickson, who are focused on supporting many other important community and economic development projects. And you get to see their work each quarter as we email out our quarterly reports to you. We're fortunate to work in our jobs and grateful for all the other many volunteers that help support our, our efforts through our organization. We look forward to, to continue to work together in the future. I'd like to have Dwayne Minor talk briefly about his role with the board of directors, the progress he's seen in our organization, and why Cal Bank chooses to invest in membership with our organization. Thanks, Dwayne.
As far as my role, I'm a board member. I'm on the finance committee in kind of a unique situation. I also helped manage the Danford Building. That was part of the old Seward Development Corporation. We owned it there, and then when we, we merged, that became part of the, the partnership. So I've been, I've been working with economic development, the chamber, for thirty plus years. Lot of battle scars, lot of turf battles between the chamber, the development corporation. The chamber had an economic development group, and, and then the Seward Development Corporation was also doing the same thing. There were times I was on both groups, and we had turf battles. And so in my mind, when we merged the chamber, the, the development, the economic development side of the things, that's when things really started taking off. When I started, it was all volunteer. It was, I'm old enough to now say that was a simpler time. With all the programs available today, I, I just don't think you can do it that way anymore. You, you need a partnership like we have. I think the idea of going countywide made it much better. And I, I also think, if you look at what's happened the last few years, you know, the proof is kind of in the pudding. Things have happened, really good things have happened. And I, I know in talking to other community leaders, I mean, Seward is an envy of, of most communities our size and what's happened. And so it's, it's been really good. I think the partnership has grown nicely with Seward. It's nice, sustainable growth economically, and obviously a good thing. I think from Cal Bank standpoint, I really like partnerships like this that are using public funds, using private funds, using the talents of both to get things done. I, I think that's a good way to, to grow and, and have sustainable growth. And, and I think that's what's being accomplished. So, you know, from the Cal Bank standpoint, we like sustainable growth that, that we can absorb from an employment standpoint. I know that's a struggle these days, but, you know, I, I think we've hit the right size of companies that have moved in in the last few years. So, you know, from our standpoint, we're, we're very supportive of economic development and, and the partnership and, and really proud of what Seward has accomplished over the last, I don't know, when did, when did it start?
Yeah, just over six years ago.
Yeah, it seems, for me, it seemed longer than that. But anyway, that's, that's all I got, so.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you, Dwayne. So just to wrap up here, thank you again for Seward City Council's investment in our organization. And last year, we did not ask our public sector members to make an investment increase from the year before. However, we are asking for a three percent increase on this next fiscal year. This year, we're asking for your ongoing financial investment because our scope of services and ability to impact economic development in Seward County is growing. And in twenty twenty two, we added a new staff member, Jacob Jennings, who obviously you have seen at various council meetings. He's focused on housing, childcare, broadband, and other workforce development projects. This aligns with our strategic plan, which was created based on direct feedback from our public and private sector members. To continue to expand Seward County, we, we need this increased level of investment. Our four public sector members' annual investments account for an important thirty percent of our total budget. Therefore, we'd like the Seward City Council to consider supporting our organization during your upcoming fiscal year with a seventy one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollar investment. Thanks again for your past support, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jonathan. Any questions from the council? Yes, sit.
Jonathan, you, you may not have these numbers in front of you, but so of the seventy one thousand, as far as the public sector, we give not quite fifty percent of total public sector money. Do you have any idea, like, countywide, of all the economic development in dollars that happens, like, in Seward and then everywhere else? What's, what would you say those numbers are if you compared them?
Yeah, and you're, and you're talking with our four, four public sector partners, like, sort of percentage wise?
Right, right. Just like Seward versus everybody else, Seward versus the rest of the county. If you had to put a number, say there was three million dollars of development, how does it stack out?
Yeah, I mean, the, the good news is, I, I can share, and we're sort of just looking at general census data. I mean, we're the ninth fastest growing county in the state over the last census. So I think there's, and you're seeing communities across the county grow. Seward grew at that almost like clockwork one percent growth, as, as Dwayne sort of alluded to, sort of that sustainable growth. And from a percentage wise, Seward does grow faster than the rest of the county. But while the city of Seward grows at about one percent, the county grows at about a half percent per year over that time. So we're five point one percent over the ten years. City service is nine point eight percent. Does, does that answer your question? Are you asking about, like, total investment as well?
Well, I was just thinking of, from, from a dollar and cents perspective, how much economic development happened in Seward, like, based upon as a direct result of your efforts versus how much economic development happened in the rest of the county related to those efforts? And I know you may not have that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say, and, and that's why we put this document together, because we track the public programs. So it's verifiable, we have public documents. So things like L B eight forty projects, taxi rent financing projects, whether there's public projects like with the Economic Opportunity Program or something like that through the state. So, so all those are verifiable. Milford, Seward, Utica all have L B eight forty and TIF, and actually, Goaner just passed a TIF project as well. So those are active, and I would say, looking at sort of other counties across the state, not every county has multiple active communities in their county. It tends to be towards maybe the county seat or, or dependent on the situation. But I think that's what we're fortunate about, is that we do have multiple growing communities. I think that's what makes our, our model especially attractive and, and why we've seen, I think, sustainable growth over time.
And also, I would, would add to that, you know, there have been other projects in the past that are in Seward County, but not necessarily tied to a particular community there. They're in between communities. So without someone like Jonathan in the organization, those would likely fall between the cracks because no one would really take ownership of that, because it's not in Seward, it's not in Utica, it's not in Goaner or Milford. And so, and we've had, you know, several of those.
Like Bear would be an example.
Right, and so I think, so to, to Dwayne's point about being countywide, that is the advantage of being countywide, is that there is someone who can still shepherd those projects. And you have a point person that can answer those questions when those developers or those businesses come to.
Yeah, I, I understand the, the value, absolutely, and I'm a hundred percent supportive. I was just curious about the numbers.
Sure.
And if you want to follow up later in an email that the council could down, that'd be, I just, for my own curiosity, I'd just like to see that.
And we actually just did a pretty significant analysis for our strategic plans. I'd be happy to show you sort of trend lines and.
That'd be awesome.
Yep.
Dwayne, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I was just going to add, when, when we started this process of, of going countywide and bringing the other communities into it, their big concern was, you're going to take our dollars and promote Seward. And, and I think if, if you look at what's been done, it's, it's been, been pretty spread out. It's, it's helped all the communities. And so I, I, I don't hear that at all today, but that was definitely one of the concerns when we started the process.
Matt, did you have something?
Yeah, I just had a comment kind of a question of, you know, when, when things got rolling and it, and it was kind of two different entities before, before you joined forces. You know, there was always looking for public money, but then there was also, like Cal Bank said, the, the private support. So is, is private support grown at about the same rate as public support? Or is, or is it growing faster? And are some of the new people recruited, some, some of the people that have been brought in and stuff, are they, are they participating too? Because, for example, Cal, Cal Bank being a hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty year old business in our community, it'd be great to see some of the five, ten year, fifteen year companies jump on board. And so that's my, that's my question, Tom.
Great, great question, Matt. And, and I, I think, you know, Jimmy John's would be a, a recent example that they basically said, as soon as we open, we want to join, we want to join the organization. They saw the value of it, and, and they wanted to invest. Pet Source would be another great example of that. And Pet Source specifically said, we want to invest at the level that our other leading employers are in the county. And so they, they've made a, a good investment.
And my comment is, if we can recruit people like that that want to, you know, want to actively participate, yeah. You know, that see the value of and stuff, man, you know. Kudos to you guys for getting here. That's, that's my comment.
I would say in fourteen years, I remember as a business owner, I've seen your list grow substantially as far as how you've had the business portion of it in that involvement. And that's really cool to see, you guys have been able to, I mean, tag those businesses on, and even if they are just one or two, you know, occupants or whatever in that business, there's still, is a category or a level for them.
Absolutely.
And it makes them part of a really good growing.
Yeah, we, thank you, Melissa. We take pride in having sole proprietor entrepreneurs all the way up to six hundred and fifty employees for Tenico and everything in between. And I think that's what makes our organization strong and helps us best represent you in our, in the county.
And economic development is something that you can't just assume will take care of itself. I mean, it's something you have to be very active and proactive. You know, my, my dad grew up in Staples, and, and he won't let me say this, but it was a long time ago. But, you know, he'll tell you, there were banks, there were grocery stores, there were a lot of businesses in Staples. I remember even as a kid, they have the Staples Fun Days, you know, you had a lot of activity going on. And I think, you know, if you aren't proactively promoting your community and, and you run the risk of a business leaving and nothing backfills. And we've seen that here in Seward. We've had businesses where there hasn't been a succession plan. And so you notice it on the square when a storefront's empty for a prolonged period of time. And, and that's, you know, to Jonathan and his organization, to their efforts to try and, and be proactive and, and also be reactive when something happens that's unexpected. And so we can continue to have a, a thriving downtown in particular, but just in general, have a strong local economy. So special thanks to Dwayne and the board and to Jonathan for all their efforts.
Because the villages are included in this as well, right? So the Staples be all.
Yeah, and, and specifically for the four public sector partners, Utica is, is specifically included in that. Jim Swanson, who's the, the chair, basically their mayor of the Village of Utica, is an active board member and has been for years. But yeah.
Just to see those small, you know, if there was a way that Staples was involved in this, that we could continue to keep growing them and, you know, those kind of things.
And I'll generally say, just as a quick example, so like, the Village of Goaner is, is not a, a kind of public sector member necessarily, but the Beck's Hybrids Project, which was a, a recent example. Clearly, it's an economic development boom that helps the whole region really. And so I'm going to spend time there clearly because it, it benefits the whole. So that, we have this kind of spirit of abundance mindset in that, you know, people are going to choose to live in Seward, Milford, Utica, Staples, wherever. But we need to support those businesses so, so we can grow the local economy.
Thanks, Jonathan. Any other questions or comments from the council, or would entertain a, a motion with membership?
Move to approve.
And just clarifies, six A, this is consideration of a membership agreement. Motion to approve. Streisand, seconded by Colterman. Need for discussion? Sign no, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Camphorath, Colterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
And item six B would be the funding agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Streisand, seconded by Colterman. Is he for the discussion? Sign no, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Camphorath, Colterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
You want to give us an update on upcoming events while you're here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Okay, we have upcoming here, Saturday, Sunday, we have Gathering on the Bricks. We're, we're very excited about the first opportunity where we're focusing on celebrating arts and culture, and would encourage you to come out. There's a lot of activities, if you haven't seen the scheduled events, would encourage you to check that out. And then on Sunday, the twenty fifth, we're hosting a Farm to Table tasting event. Have a lot of local chefs, local ingredients, local drinks. At the Band Shell, we appreciate the council's support of that event being hosted on the city property. Would encourage you to, to participate. We have a professional development luncheon on Tuesday, September twenty seventh, starting eleven thirty A M at the library. We're hosting a panel of professionals who will speak on the effects and importance of childcare on local businesses, big and small. And if you're interested in participating, would encourage you to RSVP to our office. On Thursday, September twenty ninth, six thirty P M, we'll have our Communities for Kids meeting, engaging childcare service providers all across the county. We've gotten some recent grant dollars, so we're excited to, to share how some of those funds are being invested back in the county. And then Friday, September thirtieth, if you may be entrusted, will be a grand opening for Bagels and Joe. So ten A M, we'll have the ambassadors Friday, September thirtieth. You're welcome to come join us to welcome a new business to historic downtown Seward. So we're excited to celebrate with them that day. I'm assuming there will be lines out the door. And then of course, we mentioned Rising Stars Leadership Development Program. Would encourage the city to consider investing in one of your Rising Stars as you think about kind of talent recruitment and retention. There are a lot of local businesses that are choosing to participate. I think this is sort of our succession planning we're talking about. We need to think about sort of how, how do we create that, that institutional knowledge? And part of that is investing back in our people. And so that's one of the steps that our organization is taking, is, is to create that opportunity for professional development. With that, that's all I have tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Jonathan. We're a little out of order, but while you're here. Next, we have item number seven, update on the Wellness Center.
I'll be brief. We provide a lot of documentation on the Shulveretti Grant, the state requested for their quarterly time period. So we're working on a lot of that, myself and Shane Bach and Matt Dominey. But we got everything into them that they needed and in good shape to continue on that. We got the R F Q responses in last Friday late and kind of got that tied up over the last couple of days. We received nine responses, so pretty good firms in there. So we'll be very competitive in selecting a design firm. So we'll finish up that process this week. I can answer any other questions you have, but that's kind of where we're at. We're going to move into the design phase now, and then we'll start having some more deeper discussions about funding and, and some of those other opportunities as we close out the year.
Seeing no questions, move on to the. Move on to the C-Measure Report.
I can answer any questions you have, just working on a ton of different projects, um, real estate items. We're trying to close out fiscal year items, helping staff out, uh, and so just trying to, to do that. So if there's anything that you would like me to address, I can do so.
Any questions or comments on the report? Otherwise, entertain a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Coltriman, seconded by Streisand. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Camphorath, Coltriman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
All right, any future requests for council agenda items or administrative action? Saying none? Uh, next, we ha- we did the upcoming events with Jonathan, so next we'll go to strategy session with city attorney to provide negotiation guidance concerning real estate interest at the Seward Rail Campus.
We don't have an attorney.
It's gonna default to me to tell the city attorney when you guys tell them.
I move at the city council going to closed session with the mayor, city administrator, city clerk, Jonathan Jenk, for the protection of the public interest and discuss real estate interests at the Seward Rail Campus and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance for a period not to exceed forty-five minutes.
All right, the motion, their second?
Second.
Motion, uh.
What? You made the motion. Motion by Miller, seconded by Streisand.
Right. Uh, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Camphorath, Coltriman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
All right, the council has voted going to closed session for the protection of the public interest to discuss real estate interests at the Seward Rail Campus and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance. We are in closed session. Thank you, everyone.